Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 2nd, 2023 meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Chatham. I'm Paul Semple. I'm the vice chairman. I'm acting as chairman this afternoon. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31, 2025. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 309-625-193, pound, signed, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I'll start with a roll call of board members to authorize this procedure. I'll start with Ginny.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
Randy Podash, I approve.
David H. Veach, I approve.
I will ask if any citizens or non-board members participate in the call via the phone only for their name and the last four digits of their phone number for identification purposes. Our hearing notices will be read by Sarah Clark, who is a principal permitting officer, and we will then proceed with our hearings. But let's first start with approval of minutes for October 12, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Still moved.
David H. Seconds.
All right.
Ginny approves.
I approve.
I approve.
And I approve.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to application number 23-092.
Application number 23-092, Three Oyster Drive LLC, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at Three Oyster Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15A, Block 8, Lot H15B. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming and is located 7.5 feet from Oyster Drive, 17.5 feet from Seagull Road, 10.8 feet from the northwesterly butter, 12.6 feet from the northerly butter, and entirely within the coastal conservancy district, floodplain elevation 13. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be setback 10.1 feet from Oyster Drive and 2.3 feet from Seagull Road, where a 40-foot setback is required, 7.8 feet from the northwesterly butter, and 12.8 feet from the northerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the coastal conservancy district, where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of a new driveway. The existing building coverage is 660 square feet. The proposed building coverage is 860 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland, where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 3,265 square feet of land area, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Charlie and Tenaz Saponaro, who through an LLC own the property. Charlie is here, I'm not sure if Tenaz is virtually with me.
I'm here.
She is, thank you.
Hi.
You may have guessed, Mr. Semple and Ms. Pope, I should appreciate that. She's a member of the bar, so there you have it.
I'll put that against.
Thank you. Also with me is Thad Eldridge of East Southeast, and virtually our architects, Jacob Lilly of Jacob Lilly Architects, and at some point with Sarah's assistance, I think Jacob may be able to share screens or whatever magic is necessary for those sorts of things. We are here in regard to a property down in Little Beach with which you are familiar. In fact, I asked Sarah how many special permits, variances, and so forth you have reviewed in the Little Beach area in recent years. And without talking about anything on Morris Island Road, you have granted 26 special permits in the Windmill, Seagull, Little Beach, Oyster, Skollop area, and you know the reason why. That anytime you do anything of any substance, if the value is more than 50% of the structure, you have to elevate it out of the floodplain. Moreover, most of the buildings down there were, with no disrespect to the Horn family, were sort of post-war, inelegant construction, and after 80 years, it's time for them to be updated. So Charlie and Tenaz have been property owners down in Little Beach on Eight Oyster Drive since 2002, and this house came on the market a couple of years ago, and they purchased it in 2021 with an eye to taking it down and then again up, removing it from the floodplain, and also making some modest expansions. And in terms of ZBA review, there are six houses in Oyster. Four of them have gone through this process already, and the same holds true with Skollop. Four of the six have already been elevated up, as has one in Lobster Lane. And in fact, the flood zone issues are not just theoretical. This house was flooded a couple of years ago when we had a severe winter storm, so Charlie and Tenaz understand that, you know, getting away from what FEMA and Mr. Briggs say we have to do, it makes sense to raise this house out of the floodplain. So before I go into the criteria, I thought it might be useful to have Jacob Lilly talk about what he has designed for this location. So Jacob, are you available to do that?
I'm here. Thank you, Bill, for the great introduction. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jacob Lilly, architect of this project, thanks for your time this afternoon. If you don't mind, probably the easiest way to say to me is share my screen, and I can walk you guys through what we are continuing with. If I can do that. Do I have the floor here for that?
You have permission to do that, yes.
Great, thank you so much. Just looking for the share button. Here we go. Here, be one second. Is it here? All right, great. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, yes, we can see it.
Great, all right, let me go to the beginning here. So I know all the board members have had the time to walk this site, I appreciate that. This is a great opportunity, I think, to add some value to a family that's lived here, as Bill mentioned, for the past 20 years. They love this neighborhood, but they've also fought through some floods and seen some of the issues associated with today's climate conditions. Just for a little bit of quick context, I know you guys are familiar with it, but I figured I'd show you anyway. This is the property right here.
Your screen right now is blank. It's black.
Oh, that's interesting. Let me, hold on a sec, let's try this again.
It came up momentarily, but then went black.
And then it went black. All right, well, thanks for telling me. Let me, let's give this thing a shot again here. Apologies, I'm not the most facile IT guy out there. All right, we're going to stop the share and start it again here.
It did go dark when you went full screen.
Oh, okay, well, you know what? That's what we'll do, we'll keep it as a, we'll keep it as a non-full screen, and let's try this. How about that? Did everybody see this?
Yes, that we can see.
Okay, good. I'm going to advance the slide, hopefully it doesn't go black. How about now?
That's fine.
Okay, good, all right, well, I won't touch anything for the sake of breaking the computer. A little context, this is, if you can see my cursor here, we have kind of a lime-green box here, this is the location of the proposed lift. There's currently a house there, as you're well aware. Wonderful southeast orientation out to the water, part of the edge definition of this street here. Wonderful blust, low-lying blust here in front, that median between the water and the house, and book-handed by the condo association, this starfish condo building, and the marina itself, so it's kind of nestled into this kind of corner, if you will, between these low-lying planes and perhaps not the most attractive building here, fringes of the view out to the water. Just a couple images for to use this in context, this is that, the condominiums I was referring to. This is a view basically from their street, looking out to the water, to the right here, pre-existing elevation of all the houses that Bill had mentioned that had been lifted to the right, these characters here. This is the house as it stands today, and then a view down the street, kind of showing, you know, what's going on in this neighborhood. We have some of the older cottagey houses that Bill made reference to, and then there is a different scale of house that's kind of emerging. They come in different types, but they tend to be a little bit larger as required to lift them out of the floodplain, and the result is what we're going to be chatting about tonight. But this kind of shows you this kind of ongoing evolution that's happening down in this neck of the woods. Obviously, the Canadian coastal communities are familiar with water and its impacts on buildings over time. Climate concerns that we have today are real, and they're affecting many of these coastal communities. In the, what's the old saying there, that necessity is mother of prevention, I think, you know, this image on the left probably is a pretty good example of that. You know, how does one react to dealing with the nuances of global climate change? Inherently, you know, following the federal government's mandate, getting out of the floodplain is an important part of that equation, and that's what we're doing, that's what the neighbors would be doing. The question is, how best to solve that problem? You know, the other part of this that is not lost in us is that even though these pieces are lifted out of the water here, a certain type of architecture evolves in doing so. It tends to be kind of a stick-like structural support. In this case, the buildings themselves pay homage to the kind of vernacular, regional vernacular nature that is so ever-present down on the tape. So this is a photograph taken looking down the street. This is actually one that Charlie took, which is really great. These houses were lifted recently, you can see the shingles here haven't turned, and what you're seeing here is a photo montage, we inserted our building into this photograph. And it's, you know, in many ways, a kind of a pattern seems to emerge here, and that pattern is based on variables that are obviously very familiar with the board. Those primarily being the mandate to lift the house out of the floodplain, but at the other side, there is the zoning envelope and the ridge height and the pre-existing constraints for how high the building can go. And these two components, to some degrees, are opposite one another, compress the building into conforming within those constraints. And what you're seeing here is kind of a pattern that starts to emerge, and that's based off of, you know, a recognizable architecture of that regional vernacular I mentioned, kind of the gable rebuilding, tends to be very simple and also quite attractive on the coastal, within coastal communities. And then how to seek getting some space to make the buildings habitable, and that solution is often found in adding dormers to the building to try and maintain a head height, provide some programmatic payback to the owners, but also meets the minimum head height requirements. And these buildings tend to be, you know, kind of pushed to the limits in that regards. Other things that stand out, you know, the very prominent deck, as the houses are lifted, so is the program in the house, and it kind of elevates people off the ground and disconnects them to a certain degree. And that elevation has its benefits as well, you get some wonderful views out to the water, but it also becomes a very strong architectural element. And then there was a question about how does the house touch the ground? Is the space below it conducive to, is it more storage? Is it something that can be actually used, still meeting the requirements of floodplain? And the stair is another element that tends to come forward in the sense of how do you get into this house? And so a lot of the solutions that you see are stairs that are on the outside of the buildings that kind of wrap up and bring people to that new living level. And so, in many ways, perhaps no surprise to the board, the solution that we've suggested here is, in some ways, similar to what's already happened here. But the subtleties of our house, I think, are the opportunities that we're looking for to make sure that, you know, when these projects occur, that there's an opportunity to have houses still stand out in their own way, have some interest and appeal. Neighborhoods are never homogeneous, we don't think that the design should be homogeneous from one to another. And so it's around kind of the edges that we really paid a lot of attention to. This is another photo montage, the building kind of inserted into a photograph here, seen obliquely, and this is from the street side, and I can go back to these two, and then lastly, one seen from the front. And so we spent a little time trying to make sure that whatever the nuances of these buildings were, that we were being ready with them. And so those four pieces I mentioned, kind of the deck-like structure, exposed structure, siding, how you enter the building, we looked at those in more detail, and so it's maybe a little bit harder to see the scale, but for example, the pilotes that this building is supported by, they don't reside just underneath the building, they're partially under the building, but they also extend out along the side of the building, and what that does is it's a nod to kind of the marina that's down the road here, the idea of a building would be inserted into a dock. It has that same kind of flavor. You know, they say God's in the details, and that's what we looked at here. The siding for this building is a clear cedar siding. Clear cedar being very familiar to this neck of the woods, but these are vertical cedar boards, and what they do is they provide the building with a little bit of verticality, but would soften up and become textural, just like any of the houses around it. The lower level, once again, a little hard to see at the scale, is actually, is glass where it goes from the first floor down to the ground, and it's surrounded by a cedar screen with intermittent slots in it. And what that does is it allows people to actually use their ground level, in this case, it's predominant circulation, but it lightens the mass of the house and makes the scale a little bit more diminutive as opposed to being very opaque. And I think that's pretty much most of our talking points. The goal at the end of the day was to have something that felt like it fit into the neighborhood, strengthen the edge of this street, but was something that people could walk by and still feel excited about, and more importantly, that the homeowners who have been living here for a long time would be excited about it as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, and I'll keep, I guess I'll keep the screen share up in case anybody wants to reference a drawing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jacob. Actually, if you could bring up the shot of the houses in a row as sort of to have that as a background, that might be helpful as we go forward, excuse me, as I go into the criteria. Thank you. As to adequacy of site, like the entire neighborhood, we have an undersized lot under current zoning, which in our lot is, as are most others, entirely in the flood zone. We have a small lot, but also a small footprint. It was certainly adequate when built in 1947. If you approve the special permit request, you can do so based on the finding that the site is adequate for the new home, the footprint of which remains modest, it's consistent with the others in the neighborhood, and as required, it raises the living area above the flood elevation. As to compatibility of size, the neighborhood was developed with small summer cottages, many of which have been or are in the process of being rebuilt or expanded. That photograph right there shows you what's going on in Little Beach, with which you are familiar. If you approve the special permit, you can do so based on a review of the third page of the handout that I provided you, with one exception, which is the grand lot size of 5,700 square feet. All of the other lots are in the 3,000-square-foot range or below. There is an exception as to Lobster Lane, but that's a condominium, so we took the average size for the units for lot size. But all the lots, almost all the lots are 3,000, 3,300 square feet, thereabouts. Footprints range up to 1,000 square feet, 1,056. Right now, we have one of the smallest footprints with 660 square feet, and yes, we are seeking to expand it, but only by 200 square feet to 860. The resulting coverage will be 26.3, which is exactly the same as a house across the street. It's lower than a couple, it's in the range of some others. The floor area obviously will increase, but one reason our gross floor area is larger than some is because of the storage area downstairs, which is for things that can get wet in the event, you know, fishing equipment and kayaks and the like, but that is included in the gross floor area definition. The resulting living area of 1,600-plus square feet is certainly not a McMansion. It is 800 square feet on the first floor and 800 square feet on the second floor. Again, a modest home, but consistent, it's almost the same as that at Eight Skollop, it's marginally larger than that at Two Oyster, it's less than that at Eight Lobster. So I think you can find that the proposal is consistent and will be compatible with its surroundings, consistent as gross floor area and living area for those that have a second floor, and most of them are heading in that direction. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, we have virtually all of the available nonconformities, lot size, flood zone, street setback, sideline setback. I don't think we're in the airport approach zone, but otherwise, we're nonconforming in pretty much everything. And if you approve the special permit, we're obviously not creating any new nonconformities. The proposed deck, which is to be, we are proposing to substitute for the existing raised brick patio, is closer to Seagull Road, and coverage obviously increases as a result of the living, the modest expansion laterally in order to accommodate the living area going up. As to suitability of site, the site has been developed for residential use for almost 80 years. This has had, as you can imagine, a very thorough review by the Conservation Commission. I expect when you got the correspondence on Tuesday, you saw what I saw, that the Conservation Commission said, "We haven't reviewed this yet." That's because they reviewed it a year and a half ago. They've since changed their comment, but this has been a very long developmental process. Architecturally, Jacob worked very hard with Charlie and Tenaz, but Conservation has already reviewed it. The order of condition has been issued. The order of conditions, I don't think most normal human beings read them, but I did, and this one had some very positive comments about this project, about the IA septic system, the separation, the resulting separation of the septic system from the groundwater, the mitigation planting, and the change in impervious surfaces. As to scale, siding, mass, views, and vistas, that picture says a great deal. We are very much consistent with our surroundings. The existing house, modified over the decades, is in need of improvements, and that again triggers flood zone compliance. Parenthetically, those of you who have been on board for any length of time may remember that this particular house was before you for a special permit four years ago, before Charlie and Tenaz owned it for the same sort of project, increasing the height. As to the proposal, I start with three of my favorite words, "not a gambrel." We like to take credit for that, as I'm sure you appreciate. The revised design with the gable on the street side is very much of a piece with the other houses fronting on Seagull, as is plainly shown there, and as you know from going down there. It is, I think, an attractive and thoughtful design, and the streetscape is not really an issue, because we're consistent with it. As the chair will read later, there are a series of letters from Butters, and actually, we could have added one to that pile, because Charlie and Tenaz are Butters, because of the other house that they own there. But there is neighborhood support for this proposal, which I think states a great deal. As to compatibility of use, it's a residential use, it will remain so, that doesn't change. Adequacy of town water, there is town water, it was currently a two-bedroom septic, and will remain two bedrooms if you approve the special permit. I believe that Judy Giorgio's comment letter has asked for a covenant, which we can certainly execute, but the IA system is an environmental improvement. As to impact on traffic flow and safety, there's no real change, with one exception. The carport under will get a car off of the street. Parking is tight in the summer in Little Beach, and having the car under will assist with that tight parking system. Parenthetically, the planning board has approved, because as you know, they're required to review driveways and the like in the flood zone, the planning board comment is positive. As to adequacy of utilities, they are not there. If I didn't remember the special, special permit requirement for areas in the flood zone, Mr. Semple would ask me about it, so I remembered to put it in the chart. When we're dealing with the flood zone, there is an extra criteria, the extent of lateral expansion and the resulting impact on the pervious area. We are going from, currently we're at 660 square feet of coverage, that thing is with a roof over it, and we have 805 square feet of hardscape in the notice third zone. If you approve the special permit, it obviously involves a 200-square-foot lateral expansion, but the hardscape in the NDZ is reduced from 850 square feet to 489 square feet, a 361 square foot reduction. So that impact on the pervious area is a gain, and beyond that, there is additional mitigation, several hundred square feet. I don't have the number in front of me, like, Thad will come up with the square foot number for mitigation, but that is a further benefit to the site. So as you know, the issue is whether replacing the existing structure with a new home, moving the living area out of the floodplain, and with reasonable lateral expansion, to be done compatibly with neighboring properties and with the support of a Butters, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current non-conforming house. Obviously, under the statute and our bylaw, the determination of substantial detriment to the neighborhood is up to you, but I think it's somewhat telling that neighbors in this location are supportive of it. The new house is consistent with the changes that are necessary and required for changes to renovations to Little Beach neighborhood because of the flood zone issues. It is obviously a challenge. It is obviously a challenging lot, and the petitioners and Jacob and Brianna and their design team worked for nearly two years to develop plans which provided some additional living area, but were sensitive to the site, addressed flood zone issues, and were consistent with neighboring issues. I think you know that I have, from time to time, told my clients that that, whatever that is, that isn't going to fly. You've got to change it. And Charlie and I had that kind, and Antanas had that correspondence, not quite conversation, but a subsequent conversation, over a year ago. These plans reflect considerable changes, and I think that they are much improved over what you were, you might have seen in the past, and I also think they're respectful of the bylaw and the neighborhood, and plainly, the neighbors feel the same way. So what we have developed is a plan which is sensitive to the site, which addresses the flood zone issues, and which is consistent with neighboring houses, again, as shown there. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think you can find, proposed new home is not substantially more detrimental to neighborhood, but is instead a creative but appropriate house, which is responsive to the demands of the sites, of the site, rather, and actually an improvement. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. I will ask if there is anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in favor of this application, and if so, please indicate to us so that you can speak.
I see no one to speak in support.
All right. Thank you. Let me take a look at our letters and see what we have in connection with this application. We have a memo from Judith Giorgio dated October 31st, saying, "I have reviewed the demolish and rebuild of the existing two-bedroom dwelling at this site. The proposed septic system was approved by the Board of Health at a hearing on December 19, 2022 with variances, and includes an innovative alternative septic system. The property is required to be restricted to two bedrooms on the deed," which I think Mr. Litchfield addressed. And then we have a memo from Catherine Halpern, Planning Board Chair. Dear Ms. Clark, the Planning Board at their October 23rd, 2023 meeting reviewed the zoning board's request for comment on the above referenced application to construct a driveway in the Conservancy District at Three Oyster Drive. After review of this request, the board voted to send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Members voting in favor of this request were Catherine Halpern, Art Spruch, Charlene Greenhalgh, Warren Chain, and Bob Dubus. If you have any questions regarding the above, don't hesitate to let me know. And then we have a memo dated October 18th, 2023, from the Conservation Commission, Administrative Assistant Crystal Keon. As to this application, the owner of the property at Three Oyster Drive is also shown on the tax mayor's application map, Chatham Assessor's map, Block 15A, Block 8, Lot H15B. The applicant has been issued an order of conditions. The project has been conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Perfection Acts and the Town of Chatham Local Wetland Bylaw. Promulgations under there. And we have a memo from Christina Bassett on behalf of the Chatham Historical Commission, which found the home not to be, as of the date of this memo, which was October 17th, 2023, found the home not to be historically significant and did not impose a demolition And we have a memo from Paul and Patricia Swenson at Three Skollop Terrace. Dear more board members, we are neighbors of Charlie Antanas Saponara at Three Oyster Drive, Chatham. We fully support their efforts to elevate their home to floodplain standards and have reviewed their proposal of a modest increase in the size of their home. Although the mass will increase, we strongly believe the new home will fit nicely into the evolving neighborhood and streetscape. We elevated our home on Skollop Terrace in 2019 to protect the value of our real estate in response to the flooding which occurred in 2018. The Saponaros are responding to the same concerns of protecting their home as are many others in the Little Beach area. We hope the zoning board approves their proposal. Then we have a memo from Jim and Kathy Caruso, Eight Skollop Terrace. Hi, Sarah. Hope you are having a good fall. We are writing in favor and support of Charlie Antanas Saponaros and their rebellious renovation at Three Oyster in Chatham. We have known them and their family for many years and appreciate how much they love the area in Chatham. Similar to our situation on Skollop Terrace, the renovation is a needed one, being a protection of their property from future storms and potential damage, all based on new FEMA regulations. We wish them luck with the project and many years of enjoyment in the special area. Please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions and concerns. And then we have a memo from Tim and Tracy Jewell, saying, "Hi, Sarah. I hope this note finds you well. Tracy copied, and I own Two Oyster Drive in Chatham. We wanted to reach out to convey our support for the project our next door neighbor is proposing at Three Oyster Drive." And we have a note from Tom and Al Ricky Begley, 11 Oyster Drive. Good morning. We are sending this letter in support of the zoning board application for Three Oyster Drive, submitted by Charlie Antanas Saponaro. As the owners of 11 Oyster Drive and lot adjacent to Three Oyster Drive, we look forward to the new structure and added value it will bring to the neighborhood. Let us know if you have any questions. And then we have a note from Todd Nickerson at 16 Oyster Drive. We are writing in support of the Saponaros' proposed project at Three Oyster Drive. My wife, Michelle, and I were lucky enough to purchase on Oyster Drive in 2019. Charlie Antanas were among the first to welcome us to Little Beach, and we have thoroughly enjoyed joining this unique community. As the board knows, a number of projects have been approved in Little Beach in recent years, and the Saponaros stands to be another wonderful update to the neighborhood. We wish them well." I believe that's all of our correspondence. So I will ask if anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams would like to speak against this appeal or has a specific question. Just indicate that is the case, and we will recognize you.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay. I don't see any need for rebuttal testimony, given that there is no testimony to rebut. Let's go on to board members. Why don't we start with Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Litchfield, the ad states that currently the property is 17.5 feet from Seagull. Is that's correct?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Eldridge, but if it's on his plan, I believe it.
Thad Eldridge, for the record. Yes, that is 17.5 from the building.
Currently, yeah.
From the patio, it's much closer.
And you're going to go to 2.3 from 17.5. I just want to make sure I have that right.
Well, there are two, you do, but there are a couple of points to consider. First of all, the layout of the street and the layout of the lot are not identical. We're further back from the actual paved street. Beyond that, the deck in question is up in the air, consistent with those that have been the photograph otherwise. And right now, we have a brick patio, which is, what, two or three feet off the street level? Several feet off the street level. So the the elevated deck will come out a little bit further, but not much further than the patio. Under our bylaw, even though a patio meets the definition of a structure, it's not considered to be a structure. But a deck clearly is a structure.
So you're saying, so you're saying that right now, you're already very close to the street, but it doesn't count?
Correct.
And now it's going to count, so it makes it look substantial?
That is correct. That was elegantly put, Ms. Poucha.
Excuse me. I have a couple of areas of questioning, and I may not be consistent in this, but so I guess the first, some of my first thoughts are with respect to the lower floor of the, well, I kind of became concerned, and I'm concerned with looking at, you know, with the scale of the elevations that we have, it's not very difficult to tell, but and the architect had mentioned the screening that's taking place around the, on the first floor of the building. And I'm, it's not clear to me, some of what he explained wasn't clear to me, but in this case with the building, it looks like much of that is not, the first floor is not going to be full height concrete walls under the building. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, part of it is going to be a carport.
I know that, but so the back is the carport, but forward of the carport, there's, it looks like there's a, maybe a concrete storage structure, but then forward of that, the storage room, I'm not sure that, are those concrete walls that are then covered with the cedar slats or are they, or not?
Jake, can you respond to that, please?
Yeah, so that's, that is, those are windows inside, covered in the cedar. You know, we spent a bit of time in the neighborhood noodling over a lot of the houses that had been built there, and the one thing that really stood out to us was that a lot of the times with the lifts of these houses, that the base became very substantive, and in our opinion, was doing a disservice to a lot of the housing stock, because it was increasing the scale of the neighborhood. And we recognized that there, you kind of burned the candle, but eventually, you're asked to be able to lift our houses, but at the same time, how could you be more sensitive to the massing? So the way we kind of approached that, I think I used the term diminutive earlier, was instead of having a very imposing kind of concrete structure that came down, touched the ground, we took the opposite approach. We tried to keep it very light and very open and reminiscent of kind of, you know, accessory buildings that you would see scattered around the cake that have a kind of a screen light plating to them. We borrowed from that to create ideally a much lighter touch on the ground, and hopefully in doing so, it actually scales the building down instead of making it feel larger.
Okay, so it doesn't, so the the concretes, or the slats, the cedar slats are not, they're not really backing up, backed up by a concrete wall over much of that space?
Correct.
Okay. So then, because I didn't, and I noticed too, like the house across the street, they've got some lattice, you know, screening some of the concrete wall, and that made me, but that took my thoughts then to the septic, septic, septic area. And so Thad, how are we, I mean, it looks to me, so we're going to have a concrete structure there that's about seven feet, maybe six, seven feet, eight or more, more higher than what exists now. What, is there a plan to screen that, do, what are, what are, what are the plans to deal with that? We don't want to be looking at a concrete monolith.
There certainly is a plan to to screen that. First off, under our Board of Health regulations, a septic system is required to have one foot of cover over it above the base flood elevation, much like the first floor has to be at elevation 14, the top of that septic system has to be at 14.
Yeah.
Along the sides of it, there are going to be trellises installed, and there'll be plant material put in to cover over. There are a variety of plants that we can put in. Virginia creeper would be one of them that would take over and cover that thing entirely.
Well, I did, I just wanted, this is, I just wanted to comment, because I, looking across the street, and I, for what it's worth, I found that in in my house, we have some place where we use, we use lattice over concrete wall. And what I found was that before we put the lattice over the wall or used any of that kind of screen, we painted it flat black, and I found it to be very effective. Then when you put the lattice over that flat black, it, it's hard to tell that there's even a wall behind it. So just a suggestion that I would put there with that. The other, so then the other, Bill, my other area of, I'm not sure how to, but we can talk about, is the roof deck. It's, I'm, I'm curious, you know, this, this is a, so the thing is, we have elevations, but because of the height of the railing, et cetera, with respect to elevation, it, it doesn't show up as much on an, on the elevation drawing as it would look from the street to me, in my judgment. So, and it doesn't, it's, you can't really see it in the, in the photographic or anything and things, because it's so small in, in, in scale, or not a lot of visual impact because of using the cable style of railings. But if you look at the elevation on that, this is the elevation, so it doesn't really show up very well in this elevation drawing. To my eye, it will show up more in actual, in, in actual existence. I'm not sure, you know, if, the, my only concern to that was, would be privacy in the neighborhood or on the, on Lobster Lane. We haven't heard from anyone, so I'm not sure that, my other just concern would be that whatever's dry, I wouldn't stand in the way of saying that, no, they shouldn't do this, but I would put a word out there that if this were my house, I would think very hard about compromise, that in order to put that, there's going to involve some compromises to the roof, the roof, as opposed to if you just had a roof there and no deck. And I would think very hard about how much you would actually use that and those compromises that you would need to make in, in terms of weatherability and wearability and everything, and try to weigh that against how that these, these kinds of things don't get used, used very often, and especially when they aren't accessible from a staircase and a stairway. This is accessed by, accessed by a ladder inside. Now, I'm, you know, this, I think probably in the, in the long run, it's not going to be, it wouldn't be, I don't consider it as substantially detrimental to have it up there, but I would encourage folks to think that through a little more. And other than that, I don't have any other questions right now. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Ginny?
Yeah, I had a question too about the rooftop deck. I wanted to make sure that I was, that, that, I wanted to ask to make sure that that was what you were expecting. It looked like it was sketched in the rendering of A3.3. I didn't see it in the photo image that you have, and perhaps it's because it's in the back? Is that why it's not showing?
I think it may have been difficult to do, and obviously, I mean, it's there.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, because I didn't see it, but then when I was going through the paperwork and I saw that, I was surprised to see that. Could we go back to the image of the street view that, I think Jake, is that your name, that you showed with, of all the houses?
While Jake brings it up, I'd simply comment, "Oh, thank goodness, Ben, the roof deck is to the rear, so I don't think it'd be visible from either Seagull or Oyster."
Okay.
But I understand the point.
So it's in the, it's in the back corner?
Would that be northwest?
Northwest.
Northwest.
Okay, okay.
There's also, so there's trees in the back there that do provide some privacy.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
One of the, one of the things we did is we, we notched out the roof to allow the deck to insert itself in there to keep a very low profile.
Yeah.
So the minimum guardrail height's 36 inches, and we set the ridge to the deck height 36 inches. So we literally carved it out of the back, and that allowed us to not have a railing on two sides that would be perhaps seen from the street. That, that helped to minimize some back.
Okay, no, that's helpful, because the rendering on A3.3 is not attractive. I mean, that looks like, but I, but I appreciate that that's not the front, and, and you're really, it sounds like you're really really, it sounds like you're really not going to see it that way, because it's going to be recessed a bit, and the cables are, you can pretty much see through those. So, the, not this one, but the one where you were, the other picture of where the houses were stacked up, and your house was at the end, that's the one I wanted to look at.
Yeah.
I don't have that one, too, if you want to share yours.
Yeah, I, I can certainly, you know, on second year, there, this one right here.
Yes, that one.
Can you guys, can you guys see this?
Yep, we can. So, your house is inserted in there, the, the other houses in the forefront are existing, and I just wanted to ask you, is your, is your rendering of the house include the deck that we see in all the?
It does.
It is, so, so the deck is there?
It is, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you for confirming.
Ginny, or Ms. Fenwick, if I could, if you see the privacy fencing, it's this side of that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, there.
All right, so it really does, it's really not that visible from the street. I'm asking about that, because to Randy's point about closeness to the street, two point three, when you go to the drawing A zero zero, I think Mr. Litchfield, this is where you have the deck, which is the patio, I'm sorry, the, that's what they're calling the deck on that rendering, and then that dotted line that says profile of outdoor deck above, that's what's two point three feet from Seagull, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that. So, that dotted line is the actual deck, which wraps around and then connects over to the stairs on the side.
Correct.
Okay, which is Oyster Drive.
Yes.
Currently, you don't have a driveway today, right? It looked like there was a little shell carve out, but it's not really a driveway. Yeah.
That's a fair statement.
Yeah, so I just wanted to confirm that I wasn't, at first I thought the drive, the neighbor's driveway was the driveway, and then someone was walking their dog, and they said, no, no, that's not that driveway. Like, where is the driveway? It looks like it was that. So, I think the driveway, the car park is a great idea. I think you need that. So, I just wanted to confirm the, the deck and the proximity to Seagull being two point three. Okay, that's all I have.
I don't have any questions right now.
Dave Nixon?
Hi, yeah.
And I have no further questions. Yes, Randy?
Mr. Litchfield, if you know, are there any other roof decks in that neighborhood?
I do not know, and Charlie or Tenaz, if you have the answer as to whether there are other roof decks that come to mind, I, I simply don't know the answer.
There are some similar type roof deck structures right behind us, in that neighborhood that is right behind us, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on the name, as well as a number of higher patios in some of the houses in the neighborhood.
And is there a ladder outside that takes you up to that roof deck?
No, be interior.
Okay, thanks.
And I would, I would, as Charlie was talking about the neighborhood, there, there may be some, some reservations or concerns, but of course, the issue, as you know, is whether the, the overall package is substantially more detrimental. I would simply point out that what really dominates this neighborhood is the old hotel, which is far from an architectural gem. It's, I don't know, fifteen times the size of this house, and I think that the, the changes which we have proposed for this structure, I mean, either fortunately or unfortunately, you can't see it around the corner to the left, but it makes us look good. I think, I think objectively, this is an attractive structure. There we go, thank you. But that's the neighborhood. So, would this be detrimental compared to that? Not in my judgment, and I don't think in, in the eyes of many. I apologize for going on.
I have to beg to differ. I think the neighborhood is all those raised houses, they're all over the place, and I'm not saying I don't like them, but that to me is the neighborhood.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, move to close the hearing and move to deliberations?
Dave Veach, seconds.
All right, we'll vote on that.
Ginny votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes?
Yes.
Dave Veach votes yes.
Okay, let's go into deliberations. Dave Veach?
Well, it's just kind of a sense of deja vu at a certain point, you know, we, we've been, been here before, and probably will be here again, and the issues that have come up are all much the same, you know, the, the, you know, maybe formerly had a patio that was not considered a structure, and then elevating the first floor out of necessity, and the set states, creating a deck and stairs to get up there, and so all the, all the numbers fit within that pattern. The house clearly fits in, into what's been done in the past, it's, it's a, it's a good fit architecturally for the neighborhood, I think. I think that, you know, I said my piece to a certain extent with regard to the roof deck, I'm just, but that's not a zoning, I don't see, that's not substantially, in and of itself, is not substantially detrimental to neighborhood, no part of this is. I would just advise them to think a little bit about it, because it's going to be a lot of additional expense, or a certain amount of additional expense, and, you know, just trying to get up there. I mean, you know, you gotta, first of all, you have a ladder inside, that ladder's going to need to extend to be able to climb up through the hatch, and get up there, and get down, and get drinks up, and, I don't know, but it's certainly not, it's, it's their, their right and ability if they choose to do that, I would just think that it might not get that much use. So, I will definitely be supporting, it's the only other thing I want to comment about, and just to, I had a, I had a bit of a problem with this, and it took me a while to unwrap what was going on. I was looking at the architect's elevations, and he has, had indicated, indicated, indicated certain elevations and, and things, and the, it wasn't adding up in my mind, and, and it finally occurred to me that, in, in looking at his drawings, he was showing the elevations from, I assume the lowest line is mean sea level, or wherever elevations are pulled from, but he was giving elevations to the lowest adjacent grade, and putting that in his, and I, and I kept looking at it, I was like, what's something wrong? I know the elevation's going to be fourteen point one, and, and he's showing elevation eight foot, almost nine feet, and I couldn't, couldn't get it out, couldn't, finally it occurred to me, well, no, the elevation is coming from the mean sea level, and the lowest adjacent grade sets the thirty feet, the height of the building that's allowed, but those other interim elevations were not given, they were not given, but I just wanted to put that out there to, it confused me quite a bit for a while, but I don't hold that against them, I'm just explaining. Anyway, that's probably more said than need to be, but I will support this, I think it's a very good project, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think it'll be a great addition.
Ginny?
Okay, I, yeah, I, I think it's a thoughtful design on the whole, I agree with all the comments that you've made, needs to go up, it's, it is an increase in the, the building coverage, which, it's not a lot, and I, I appreciate your comparisons always, Mr. Litchfield, but it is, I mean, it's, it's a couple hundred square feet, when really your buildable upline is zero, so you, it's, there's an ask there. But I, in general, I, I am, I'm supportive of this, I, I think the driveway is a big improvement, I, the height is not an issue, you can clearly see that it fits right in. I was concerned about the rooftop deck less now that I know it's in the back corner, but the one item I do want to bring up is that proximity to Seagull, the, the size of the deck, if, I'd like to see what my other colleagues say about the size of it, but there was a neighbor just down the street that we had, to your point earlier, we've seen a lot of these, and I haven't even been on that long, I feel like I've seen a lot of them. Two scallop terrace, not to say we need to do the same thing there, but there was concern about that house, you might recall, and that was six point two feet from Seagull, and, you know, with, and now, also, I understand the, the road curves, and that was sort of at the top, and, and the houses, that's why I asked for that other streetscape view, they do sort of set back and slot in, so visually, it's not, I think, as important as it was for scallop terrace, but I do bring it up, because we did talk about that, and, and we did end up asking for that to be cut back, the deck, two feet, wasn't a lot, but we thought it made a difference on that road, so that, that would be something that, I mean, and the decks are, you know, the, the proposed deck that our applicant has here today is thirteen by twenty, is that, is that right, or thirteen by twenty-four?
Thirteen, what's the width of the building? It's thirteen feet deep, which is really issue.
Yeah, so there could be a little room to move there, that's just something I was, was thinking about. That's all I have.
I like a lot about this project, I think it's very well done, I don't have any issue with the height, it, it fits right in, the lot size is so small, it's, you know, obviously, as we've discussed, a unique, tight area. I, I think it, I think it fits in very, very well with the neighborhood. I do, however, think that visually, the mass is a little bit bigger than the other houses, and I think there's two things that add to that, and, you know, there's nothing, you know, this, this is more of a design, but I do think it, it adds to the mass of the house, and I think the pilings, although they're very cool and unique, I think they do make the house look a little bit more substantial, bulky, you know, in a good way, than the other ones. And also, from the Oyster Lane side, the dormers, all the dormers match everything else that's there, but the windows in the dormers are, are large, they're just as big as the ones on the first floor, and I totally get it, I love light myself, but traditionally, usually, windows on dormers are a little bit smaller on the second floor. But, so that's, I, I think it's a great project, I will vote to support it, but those are just my thoughts regarding the mass and fitting into the neighborhood, criteria number five. And I wouldn't mind seeing the deck, especially if they have a roof deck, I wouldn't mind seeing the deck shortened, moved away from Seagull Lane a little bit, maybe would help the mass a little bit, but I will, I, I will support it.
Randy, and deliberations?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chair. So, I could lather before I shave, but I'd rather just go to shaving, because it's been a while already, so I agree with Ginny and with Lee about everything they said, and I would support it if the deck was shaved back. It's only fundamentally fair that this deck gets shaved back. I know we don't have quote unquote precedent, but it just seems very unjust to me, because we thought, you know, our here was on fire about six feet from the street, and this is two point, whatever it is, from the street, it's very, very close, it's too close. And I appreciate the architect, you know, and I am not criticizing him at all, but it's funny that he pointed out that he made the building stand out in its own way, but sometimes that's not the best thing for this kind of neighborhood, because it, it tends to impinge on the criteria to fitting him with the neighborhood, so there's a little struggle with that, but I would support it if the deck was cut back.
Well, we get a couple of comments on the deck size, we haven't yet taken any kind of a vote. In terms of my thoughts, I agree with Dave Veach that I have some hesitation with respect to that upstairs deck, you can't really see it when you look at any of the elevations, but I do question how usable it's actually going to be, and whether it makes sense. But I don't think that that's an area that would require me to say it disqualifies it substantially more detrimental. But the deck size is one issue that has been dealt with in one other home in that area. I don't know whether there's more than one at this point who would consider that to be detrimental, but we could take a straw poll if you would like that.
If, thank you, Mr. Simple, and is Mr. Nixon going to offer comments, or?
I thought Mr. Nixon was not participating.
Thank you.
Unless I want to. No, I think all the comments you heard, we added up.
We appreciate that.
A small change should be made.
Thank you. We are actually cognizant of what happened recently down the street. We have considered it, and if, I've got, I think, authority, unless Charlie or Tenaz says otherwise, if we were to reduce the deck to drop off from thirteen to ten and a half, that would then end up being seven point one feet from the street, and two scallop ended up at six point nine from the street, three scallop is at six point eight, three oyster, or two oysters at four point six, so we'd be further than that, but we could live unenthusiastically, but we could live with a reduction to ten point five. I can tell you from personal experience, a deck narrower than ten feet really doesn't work, but we could drop it to ten point five, and if, if, if that were required to obtain four affirmative votes, and so that you could listen to Mr. Ford and Mr. Riley, we could agree to that.
And if I could clarify, that's from the asphalt, not from the sideline?
Yes, from, yeah.
That would be from the asphalt, some of those properties, the asphalt goes onto the property, and the sideline is into the road, so you'll see, like two oyster, it's an eight point oh foot setback to the sideline, it's seven point one feet from the asphalt.
To the pavement, but?
So, bringing this down to ten point five will put us right in line with that, with seven point one feet from the pavement itself.
Okay, is that clear then to Randy?
Can we sort of compare apples to apples in terms of, to the street? You know, how much are you going to cut it back to what you have now?
Cut it back two and a half feet, from thirteen down to ten point five, and it would be if?
But right now, it's seventeen point five feet from the street. Am I wrong? And you want to go to what?
Well, actually, I think if, if we could bring up the shot of the first floor with the dotted line that Ms. Fenwick referenced earlier, we would be basically reducing the overhang of the first floor deck back, back very close to where the patio is now.
How many feet from the street would it be?
How many feet, I think it would be seven, uh?
It would be five point eight feet from the sideline, it would be seven point one feet from the asphalt. The sideline's an imaginary line that's out there, the asphalt is what you see when you're out there.
The, the ground level, not that sheet, the ground level sheet?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, that was the one that Ms. Fenwick talked about, the dotted line, and we'd be reducing it back to approximately to the, where it's shown, the hard line of the outdoor deck. And no, I can't give you a guarantee that that's two and a half feet, but that's approximately where it would be. So, the, that reduction, we didn't just come up with it instantly, we looked at what you did down the street, talked to the applicants, and said, this may be necessary, I know there's no precedent, but consistency is a nice thing, except when it's not, we are willing to be consistent.
Sounds fair.
Did that address your concerns as well, Ginny?
Yeah, I appreciate that, just to confirm that the deck would be?
You need to put your mic?
Sorry, just to confirm then, the deck would be ten point five by twenty. Okay, yes, that does, I like that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Yes.
I just, just to say, my thinking on this is, I, and I can go along with my fellow board members, but I'd just give them another six inches. I'd say, bring it back two feet, you know, to 11 feet overall. I mean, we're not gaining that much by that other six inches. They do, as Bill says, I mean, you know, at a certain point, the more you, the narrower you make a deck, the more you limit its, the ability to use it to a certain degree. So if folks are okay with that, I would just say, make it 11 feet, and appreciate your offer, and you would let it 11 feet.
Well, I guess the question is, what's the application going to be? Is it?
Well, if we had requested 14, we'd be happy to deliver, to reduce it to 11. But we didn't. But I think Mr. Veach's suggestion is reasonable. It would, again, it would still be consistent with two and three scallop and two oyster. And as that has indicated, the pavement in the lot line is an inconsistency, but it would be more or less in a row, and the 11 feet would be, needless to say, acceptable to the applicants.
Those 11 feet, address your concerns, Randy?
I like the first. Mr. Veach would've said yes to the application at the beginning, so we have to remember that. So I like what you worked out with us, so that's what I would support.
And Ginny?
I think it either works for me.
So do you wanna stick to the foot and a half, to the?
I mean, I like Mr. Litchfield's offer of 10, five, so just, the deck on scallop ended up being 10 by 22, and this deck, and these are not identical properties, I understand that. 10 and 1/2 by 20, it's a little more than 20, actually, because it comes over a little bit across the stairs, but.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tenenbaum, Mr. Sopnar, Ms. Sopnar, can you live with 10 and 1/2?
Yes, we can live with 10 and 1/2.
Thank you.
All right, okay. Then I understand.
I withdraw my application.
Appreciate the six inches.
Motion to amend it.
Yeah, we do definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion with respect to the application?
So moved. Yeah, 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 that little detail, that motion part. I move that we accept the application as amended in our discussion to, can you, 10.5 feet for the deck? 10 and 1/2?
10 and 1/2 feet on the deck.
Okay.
And what about conditions?
Right.
Do we?
We presumably would want our normal summer conditions with respect to that, which would be that all construction activity and vehicles would be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner between, excuse me, June 15th and September 15th. No exterior construction will be allowed. No work could be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
June 15th?
June 15th.
Oh, seems, that's what you do in that area? Okay, sure.
Okay.
Dave Veach seconds.
Those conditions, plus the condition that reduces the size of the deck.
And Dave Veach second.
We have a motion and a second, all right? Are we ready to vote? Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Veach votes yes.
And Randy votes yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Moving on to our next application, we have 23-094, 444 Cockle Cove Road.
Application number 23-094, the KC 2014 Funding Trust care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, P.O. Box 485, West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 444 Cockle Cove Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 5B Block 12, Lot 20. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change, a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located 5.9 feet from the northeastern Lea Butter, 11.4 feet from the eastern Lea Butter, and within the coastal conservancy district. The proposed dwelling will be nonconforming, in that it will be located 6 feet from the northeastern Lea Butter, 6 and 1/2 feet from the eastern Lea Butter, and within the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,155 square feet, 39.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,170 square feet, 40% or 15%, but not more than 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The law is nonconforming, and that it contains 2,920 square feet of buildable upland, and contains 7,340 square feet of land area where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
All right, before we begin with this, Mr. Ford, you did submit a letter indicating that the Conservation Commission has not yet taken any action with respect to this property. And I would like to just take a minute to ask the members of the board whether they had any objection to our going forward, or whether we should consider continuing until we have had a word from the Conservation Commission, given the location of this property. Why don't I ask, I'll start with Dave Nixon.
I think in this situation, I would ask for a continuance. This is a, let's just say, a home that is not for the weak of heart, where it's situated. And, you know, the question in my mind was, boy, can you build another bulwark this far back? Of course, that might cost you $750,000 or something like that, but I'm not comfortable approving or even discussing something where the environment is really strong and it could go tomorrow. So I think I would want to hear from them, that's all.
Yep. Randy?
Also, in the interest of fairness, again, we usually make people continue it if we haven't heard from Conservation, so I would, I'd ask you to continue it.
I'll go along with fellow board members. The only, the other thought I had in the other direction was, well, we frequently, they are pulling it back from, you know, proximity to the water, and, you know, we frequently get from the Conservation Commission that projects are conditioned to meet the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act. So I could go either way, but I will go with you guys. Thanks.
Ginny?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah, I'll go along with the board as well.
Yeah, I raised this issue because that was my first reaction. It seemed to me that this is a property that is really impacted by the environment. It's not a property that is minimally affected. So I think it would make sense to continue this until we've had action by the Conservation Commission, if that's agreeable to you.
I hear you, Mr. Jim, and all members of the commission, really, other than Mr. Veach. The zoning kind of got ahead of the Wetlands filing in this particular case, and so we found ourselves in this position. And recognizing that you're a very busy board, and the slots to get on the Board of Appeals are, we're all look forward to those, and I didn't know whether the board wanted to have us put the case in, but continue it until we've had our Conservation hearing, and then come back with that. What I'm hearing, I think, is from members, you'd prefer to wait for the presentation until we have an initial hearing at Conservation.
I think that's.
If I'm reading you correctly.
I think that's correct, yes.
If that's the case, then, Sarah, I think we're on a track for Conservation on the 7th.
Conservation meets the, I would say, the 6th and the 20th of December.
And you have a hearing on the 7th.
We do. I have six applications on that day already. They aren't too bad. Let me just look at my agenda real quick. The 14th, we don't have a meeting, as of right now. We have six, so as of right now, I have six on December 7th. I have six on December 21st. I know the chair and I had discussed if we needed to do an extra meeting, we could potentially do one December 14th, and that might lighten the load on two of those other days, if the board was inclined to do so. But I would need to check to make sure that the room's available, staff is available, and all of that, so I don't know if I necessarily feel comfortable continuing to a date that we haven't booked the room for.
Well, I think we could continue it to December 14th, pending approval by whatever it might be. That gives you time to check with everybody and still set it up.
In doing that, we would still have to come here on the 14th, even if we couldn't get the room. We have to continue to a date specific, so I would have to have that all set to go before we continued it to that date. So my recommendation, if the board was inclined, we could do the 7th or the 21st. It's up to you guys.
Well, I would, I would ask the board members, if you had to come here on the 14th for 15 minutes, is that okay? I mean, to try and pack this on to either the 7th or the 21st just doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that, especially trying to accommodate all of this. I mean, we, you know, obviously, there's a lot going on, and so I would lean towards trying to schedule that meeting, but Sarah understands the intricacies of this. Can we, could we do this? Could we, could we today take it to the 7th or the 21st, and then, if we find out that we're going to do the 14th?
Right, you could open the meeting on the 7th and just continue it to the 14th.
That's what I was gonna say.
So if you continue it to the 7th, with the understanding that if the 14th is scheduled, on the 7th, you'll move it to the 14th.
That is a possibility. I could check tomorrow to see if the room's available. I would put it on the 7th agenda, and then, since it's a continued hearing, it wouldn't have to be advertised in the paper, so it would, that would be doable.
I think trying to fit, trying to fit it into December 14th at this point is, trying to put five pounds into a three-pound bag. It's just not, it's not working at this point. So why don't we, why don't we do it to the 7th, and then we have the opportunity to continue it on to the 14th, if we get that date.
Paul, I think Santa has his bag full of presents for you, and they're all marked 14.
Coal, it's all coal.
Yeah, well, it's coal.
It is coal. So that, so would you like to move to continue to December 7th?
I would, I would request, on behalf of the applicant, that it be continued to December 7th.
Thank you. Do I hear a vote with respect to that? I hear a motion.
Oh, so I'll move to continue the hearing till December 7th.
And Dave Veach seconds.
And Ginny votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Yes.
And Veach votes yes.
Thank you, thank you for your consideration.
All right, moving on to application 23-095.
Application number 23-095, Mary Beth Richardson, 520 Riverview Drive, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 520 Riverview Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 7J Block 16, Lot C117. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change, a conforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling and proposed additions comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 5.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 7.8%, or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 35,232 square feet, where 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Oh, no.
Mr. Riley, when you're ready, we'll go forward.
This one's me.
What? That's for you. Another copy.
The, this was a project that had been filed by Mike, Mary Beth, and the architect, Henry Arnado, who's here today with us, as are Mary Beth and Mike. And it came to me quite late. I assumed that the ever-efficient Sarah Clark had all the necessary information. The, as I went through the file, I realized it wasn't quite as clear as it might have been. So thanks to Henry, I passed out a sheet that shows all the changes in the building, and gives the gross floor area on the bottom right. So I'm gonna ask Henry to explain the changes to the building. They're quite modest. And then, we'll go from there. Henry, please.
All right, so we are adding on to the rear of the house.
Would you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, Henry Arnado, HPA Design. We're the architects who designed the project for Mary Beth and Mike. So they have an existing cape, a sprawling, long cape that's not very deep. It was built in 1970. And they approached me, asked me to design something for them, because their needs are getting, have a larger home. After a long design process, we effectively are adding an 18 by 28 rectangle behind the garage and breezeway. We are adding a 20 by 9 extension of the existing living room, and those are the additions on the first floor. If you look on the Z1 sheet, the gross floor area of the first floor currently is 1969. We've added 680 square feet, and the total.
That's the sheet I just passed out.
And the total on the first floor is 2649. On the second floor, we are adding only over a portion of the addition on the first floor. In the center of the house, we are adding 5 feet by 20 feet. On the area over the garage, and I call the breezeway, which is a transition space between the house and the garage, we are adding 16 by 35 roughly. And then along the front of the house, we are putting a shed dormer that is 16 feet wide, 5 feet deep. And some of those numbers are, so the second floor is 734, the proposed is 632, the total is 15, I'm sorry, 13. is 15, I'm sorry, 1357. And just to get a better understanding, the space over the garage was already there. We're not adding additional space. The volume was there. We added a shed dormer, but we're not adding more space. The addition is primarily on the first floor. And to complete the math on the basement, we did a gross floor area calculation there. Again, there's the rectangle in the back and then the rectangle in the center. The basement currently is 1261, we're adding 680, and the total of that is 1941. And with, along with that, on the Z1 sheet, you'll see a building section and you'll see that the proposed height is 22.5 feet high, and that's based on the grade plane that the surveyor provided us. The addition is not any taller than the existing house. It's probably about 10, 12 inches lower than the existing ridge. We haven't changed the character of the house. It's a sprawling cape, and it's a sprawling cape after we're done.
All right, thank you very much, Henry. These changes are being made because Mike and Mary Beth are living down here full-time now, and they wanted to have a little more living area in their house. The, one thing Henry didn't mention, the, I didn't make clear, the ridge of the garage is going up a little bit. And we don't know how much, but we know that the ridge of the garage is gonna still be below the ridge of the house. So we're in compliance. I talked to the surveyor, and because he's not familiar with our processes, he didn't have the information, he couldn't tell me what the ridge of the garage is gonna be. So, but he was very helpful, other than that. So I think the important thing to consider here, you know, in line with criteria number five, you know, what's the impact on the neighborhood? Really, virtually nothing. The ridge of the garage goes up a couple of inches, and there's gonna be a small shed dormer on the front of the house. All the other changes are on the backside of the house. And so I also, having lived in town for a while, I didn't bother going along, showing all the sizes of the, of the houses on the street, because they're all the same. So I figured I would save myself that time and use the reading. So I think that the, if we go through the criteria, so is the size a lot adequate for the proposed use? Yes, because, you know, we're only going up to 7.8% where 10% is allowed. We meet the setbacks easily. Compatibility to the size of the proposed structure, again, I didn't, I didn't go through the assessor's records, but all you have to do is drive down the street and you can tell that the houses are all about the same size. So we're here because in their infinite wisdom, some time ago, they changed the zoning in a completely developed subdivision from 20,000 square feet where everything would be compliant to 60,000 square feet where nothing is compliant. So that's why you guys are so busy. In any event, you know, so the houses are compatible in size, increase in non-conforming nature, just because we're increasing the living area in the house, that's the only reason. We do meet all setbacks. So suitability to the site, if you've been there, you know, it's essentially a level site. There'll be a little excavation on the backside because they're expanding the foundation, but other than that, I don't, there's no worry about runoff or, and there are no water bodies or wetlands in the area. So the site is suitable for the proposed construction. Impact and scale sighting and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Well, I don't think we have to worry about views and vistas. The streetscape, of course, is important. Here, the only change on the front of the building that would be noticeable after the work is completed is a small shed dormer on the front of the roof. All the other changes are on the rear and have no impact on the streetscape. And the, you know, to the extent that the building's being upgraded and modernized, not only is it not substantially more detrimental, it raises the value of all the houses around it. And so we would ask that you approve this as not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I will ask if there is anyone in the audience or in Microsoft land that would like to speak in favor of this application. If so, please indicate now on the screen and we will recognize you.
There's no one to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have a memo from Judith Giorgio, the health agent, dated October 31st. "I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property. The proposal does not add septic flow to the existing four-bedroom dwelling, nor will it encroach on the required offsets to the septic system. I have no concerns." And then we have a letter from Elizabeth Walker, 486 Riverview Drive. On behalf of herself and her husband Homer, "We are writing in support of application 23095 for a special permit, which was submitted by Mary Beth Richardson at 520 Riverview Drive, Chatham, Massachusetts regarding a renovation and additions on a non-conforming lot. As owners of a nearby River Bay home, perends circa 1969, closed perends, that needed extensive renovations, we understand the importance and the value to both the owners and the neighborhood community of updating and preserving these homes to meet today's building codes and the needs of today's families. We have every confidence in the Richardson's renovation and addition plans for their home." And then we have a letter from Anne Marie and William Litchfield. "We reside at 531 Riverview Drive and are thus close butters to the Richardson home. We write in support of the application to construct a modest addition to the rear of the house of the property, which patently meets all the criteria for the grant of a special permit." I take it that's not a legal opinion, but the applicant has owned this home since 1999, and now that it has become a permanent residence, has an understandable need for additional space, which can be built in compliance with all dimensional requirements of the bylaw. We fully support this request, which is not at all detrimental to the neighborhood. We respectfully urge the Board of Appeals to approve the special permit." And that's the end of our correspondence. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft teams that would like to speak against this appeal or has a specific question. If so, please indicate your desire to speak.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
Okay, I'll go on to Board members with respect to any questions they may have. Why don't we start with Dave Veach?
I have no questions, Paul.
Ginny?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Lee?
No questions.
No questions, all right. Do I hear a motion?
I move to...
Move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
All right, we'll vote on the motion. Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Yes.
Paul votes yes?
Randy votes yes.
Veach votes yes.
Okay. Why don't we start our deliberation, and we'll start with Ginny?
Okay. So we're here today because you have, you have a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot. The first and second floor, from existing to proposed, is like a 48% increase in gross floor area. But I agree with Mr. Litchfield, and the house was purchased in 1999, his comments as a neighbor. We also went and did, and I agree with the architect's comments, that it's a long house, but it's not deep. So even though you're here for the non-conforming lot size, you've got the space. It's a beautiful lot with very private backyard. We met the owners on our site visit and, you know, it's just, it's a very exciting project. And I, the only thing that's changing in the front is the dormer, and like you said, Mr. Riley, just a slight change to the ridge of the garage. So I, I think it meets all of our criteria and I would support it.
I'll keep it very short and sweet. I think it's a great project and I will vote for it.
All right, thank you. Randy?
I could keep it even shorter. Ditto.
I agree it meets all the criteria. It's not substantially more detrimental in the neighborhood and we'll support it.
And I agree as well. Do I hear? Yes, of course.
I'm fully in support of it, and I don't know if you noticed, Mr. Riley, the fantastic weather vane. It's on the small cupola.
I did not notice.
Well, it reminded me very, very much of you, so take a look at it sometime.
That's pretty scary, Dave.
All right, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the application as submitted. I don't, conditions, we, I think all the standard, I don't think we need the summer conditions in this location, but the, our first condition about all vehicles and construction activity be confined to the lot or with permission of neighbors.
That would be all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner.
I second that.
You wanna have, you wanna have the no work before eight and no work after five during the summer months?
I think that's, that's, that is a good idea. Keep that, the, those hours during the summer months is a good.
All right, then between June 30th and Labor Day, construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. No work could be permitted on weekends, and no exterior construction will be allowed. Is that consistent?
I thought we decided we didn't need the summer conditions.
I think we can leave the, the exterior.
So that would be all three, all of our three normal subcategories.
No, so they'd be allowed to do exterior work during the summertime, but not before 8 o'clock and not after 5 o'clock. And no work on weekends.
Right, so we're just carving off the no exterior construction and some leave the other parts, the timing parts.
I got it, I got it. Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? All right. Ginny, why don't we start with you?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Yes.
Veach votes yes.
And Paul votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I make one comment about timing? Can I just make a comment about timing? Just to be clear, the town has a bylaw about the timing of construction anyway, so we don't have to, we can remember that.
Yeah, but doesn't start at something like 7 and go until 10 or some such thing? So, I mean, I, it is, I've had experience where I wished that the hours were more, not starting at 7 and going.
Be sure and show Riley the weather vane.
All right. Moving on to application 23-096.
Application number 23-096, Sean V. Rico LLC, Care William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 14 Pondview Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 11D Block 30, Lot 5. The applicant seeks to enlarge and standard change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and barn and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 12.8 feet from the road, 13.9 feet from the easterly of butter. The existing barn is non-conforming and it is located 4.8 feet from the westerly of butter. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered substantial alteration and under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 1,309 square feet and the proposed building coverage is 2,840 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 93 feet of frontage where 100 feet is required. The lot contains 20,384 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley? Bill? Bill? Need one here. Need one of these here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley on behalf of Sean V. Rico LLC, the owner of property at 14 Pondview Lane. It's a situation where an older home with very limited accommodations is gonna be removed and a new home's gonna be built. The architect is a gentleman named Doug Dick, who has done quite a few homes in Chatham, I'm happy to say, and I've represented him on several. So what I'd like to do is have Doug, there he is, explain the concepts of the plan and how we got to this particular design, and then we'll go through the criteria. All right, go ahead, Doug.
Hi, all right, sure. Got some noise behind the eyes, apologize. Let me just walk through our concept of the house, and then I'll, if I could, I'd like to share my screen just to show you some versions of the plan and the elevation that support what the design intent is. So we were asked by our client to create a new two-story.
You can go ahead and share your screen.
Okay. I'll do that in just a moment. So we were asked to create a new two-story, three-bedroom house with two-car garage for their family of four. And they wanted to create a house that was more spacious for their family, but yet was compatible in scale, massing, and style with the rather eclectic grouping of neighboring capes, colonials, and then larger scaled waterfront homes down by the river. Our approach was to split the massing of the overall house into two smaller gable forms. Share my screen. I hope you're seeing the floor plan here.
Yes, we can see it, yes.
Okay, so the overall footprint of the first floor is about 2,800 square feet. I've got that exactly here, but that's roughly what it is. And what we've done is, when you look at the first floor plan, the areas in this kind of pink background show basically two gable elements, two-story gable elements, large, larger portion being the main house, the smaller portion being the garage. And the concept was to have the home, the gate, the larger gable offset slightly from the smaller barn element, connected by circulation area, which is an elevator and a stair. Then on the on the second floor, it's a little more obvious. You can see that it's the main house element and then the barn element to the left. And the remaining portions of the first floor are one-story, either porches or... either porches or shed-style additions on the right above into the left. And on the roof plan as well, the shaded areas are the two main masses of the house, again with the intent to take a somewhat larger home and reduce the overall massing to be more compatible with some of the two-story homes and garages in the neighborhood. And then if I go to the street side elevation, which is on the top of the sheet, again, the areas that are slightly shaded in pink represent the two main massings of the house with a connector that's set back from those two elements. The, the two main massings will be clad in naturally weathering shingle, white cedar shingles, with traditional double-hung windows with divided lights. The, the window elements on the garage in the right part of the massing have a kind of a unique window arrangement, which is meant to replicate the kind of the doors in a barn loft. Going around to the other sides of the house towards the, towards the river, as you can see in the lower elevation on the right, there's a lot more glass grouped together to create broad areas for the views, but those aren't really visible from the street. We've got then, I just want to show this site plan. So this was the submitted site plan and I've just highlighted in this pink overview, the two main gable elements of the house. Again, to begin to break the massing down into forms that are more compatible with the neighboring buildings. Yeah, so I think that's, I think that kind of describes briefly our goals for the project in terms of taking the house, creating a, what is a somewhat larger home in terms of the, the homes on the Pondview Lane portion, more compatible, I guess, in size to the, to the houses that are closer to the river, but breaking it down into separate building elements that can relate more to the adjacent structures. I will stop sharing. I'm glad to share again if you'd like me to, but I can answer questions.
All right, thank you. I guess one of the things we'd point out is that the, if you drive down Woodcarver Knoll towards the water and turn around and drive back, you can see all the houses there, of course, are there for the view of Oyster Pond and the river, the Oyster River. And so there are large areas of window. And what Doug has done with this design is the living quarters are all on the second floor. So to take advantage of the view and the bedrooms are in the main located on the first floor. So the, again, so that it mimics the goals of the homes that are a little bit closer to the water. So to kind of go through the criteria, you know, adequacy of the size of the site in terms of the size for the proposed use. And again, so it's, I would point out, by the way, that if there was seven more feet of frontage on the lot, right now we have 93 feet of frontage. If we had seven more feet, we wouldn't, you guys would be on your way home for cocktails. In any event, so we don't have that seven feet, so we require a special permit. So the, but we meet the setbacks. We meet the building coverage. We're going up, obviously extremely modest home that's there today. I don't know if any of you know Dan Silva. His parents built that house back in the 50s. The, in any event, the, so, you know, so if you're driving down Pondview Ave., which is the street from Route 28 to this property, the homes are, the closer you get to Route 28, they're more modest. The closer you get to this property, you know, a lot of the homes have been redeveloped and almost all of them are second-floor houses. When you drive past this house, all the houses are second-floor houses, some of them quite substantial. The, I don't want to get too far afield, so I just stuck with Pondview West, which is, if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the house, you'd go to the right and the road continues and kind of curves around. That's Pondview West. Going down towards the water is Woodcarver Knoll. And so I, I have listed, again, math by Riley, so it's always dangerous. But I have listed my best efforts at calculating the gross floor area of the buildings which I've identified, all of which are, as I said, Woodcarver Knoll are down on Pondview West. So compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Well, the gross floor area of this building is basically 6,000 square feet. The the numbers are, so the first floor is 2,234 square feet and the second floor is 2,137 square feet. For a total of 4,371 square feet of visible house. You know, the basement is 1,634 square feet. So the, it's basically 5,000 square feet of visible. And we do have some houses going down towards the pond that are that size. Most of the houses are somewhat smaller. Pondview West was developed in the 80s and some of the, some of the Woodcarver Knoll properties were developed in the 80s, but have been redone. So we, we represented the Keating House, which is like 41 or 42, that was approved by this board. You know, and that's the, that's the house, 44, it's 5,190 square feet. So for this house to take advantage of the views, they needed a second floor. And, you know, the complementary use maximizing the second floor, because that's where the living's going to be, leads to the mass of the structure. However, I think it's important to consider the fact that you really can't see the mass of the structure. You can see the front, the two cable ends and the connector that Doug referred to, but really the mass of the structures moves away from the street and is blocked by the ridgeline of the, of the gable ends that, that face the street. So for a person driving by, what you see is just the front of the building. You don't see the long attachment where the living area is. So I think that although the building's larger than its neighbors, the effect of the building is compatible with its neighbors because you don't see the entire mass of the building because it's hidden behind the ridgeline of the front section. So the increase in nonconforming nature, the, again, we're, we meet all dimensional requirements, but we are increasing the living area on a nonconforming lot and that's why, you know, we require a special permit. Suitability of the site, including not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment. So if you've been there, the lot is basically level. It tails off a little bit as you get towards the rear, but there are no wetlands in the area. And it's not so steep that we would worry about stormwater runoff onto the neighbor's property. So we think that the site is suitable for the proposed construction. So impact of scale, size and mass on the neighborhood visual character. The, the, I think the most important thing, as I have already indicated, is that you see the front of the building. There you go. See the front of the building, but you don't see the long backside of the building. And although, you know, it's a full two stories, the, it's a foot below the maximum height allowed under our bylaw. So one thing that applicants always want to do, they want, they want to meet the numbers. They don't want to exceed the numbers of what's allowed. And so that's what, that's how Doug has designed this. And so we think that it's an attractive design. There are no views or vistas, but the, the streetscape, we think, is more attractive without the little building that's there. You know, very plain, very simple, without adornment. But in today's neighborhoods, nobody wants to live next door to the house because the value of these properties is elevated when you put a structure like this, particularly when it meets all the setbacks. And so the, we think that although it's larger, because of the way it's designed, we believe that you could find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, despite the fact that it is larger than most of the houses. Because as you go down the hill, it's really very compatible with the houses. So compatibility of the use with neighboring uses, they're all single-family homes. Or actually, the house is on a seppal, so we're going to be putting in a new septic system. So method of sewage disposal will be improved. In fact, on traffic flow and safety, we don't think there'll be any. One of the things they're doing is they're using the driveway around the corner on Woodcarver Knoll rather than the parking space that's directly in front of the building now, where people would back out onto the street. So minor improvement there. Noise and litter, we think there's no change. Utilities and other services are adequate and 11 and 12 are not applicable. So that would be our presentation. Doug is here to answer questions, if you have any. And I am too.
All right, thank you.
Notice no cupola, by the way.
We appreciate that. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in favor of this application. If so, please indicate and we will ask you to speak.
There is no one to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have one letter from Judith Giorgio dated October 31, 2023. Health agent. I have reviewed the plan to demo and build a new dwelling at this location. The applicant is proposing a new three-bedroom dwelling and septic system to replace the existing seppals. The existing floor plans for the dwelling show an existing two-bedroom dwelling as defined by Board of Health Nitrogen Loading Regulation. The applicant must apply to the Board of Health for approval of a third bedroom with an IA septic system or a variance to install a conventional three-bedroom system due to the imminent construction of the town sewer on this road. The proposed office area on the north side of the second floor meets the definition of a bedroom. This must be revised to eliminate this space as a potential fourth bedroom. I am also concerned about the potential for bedroom space in the first floor family room. Both rooms have sufficient privacy for bedrooms. The Board of Health will likely request that these spaces be redesigned with six-foot cased openings. And that's the extent of the correspondence. Do you want to respond to the comments by Judith Giorgio?
No, that's their regulations and I've already discussed them with the applicant. So it's just, it's a very minor change. I don't know if the applicant has discussed it with you, Doug. But, you know, so the opening to the downstairs family room just has to become a six-foot cased opening, which is a very minor change on an interior wall.
Yeah, we discussed that. We're making that change.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a second floor room that also needs a six-foot cased opening.
All right, I'll ask if there's anyone on Microsoft Teams or in the audience who would like to speak against this proposal or has a specific question. Please indicate, we will recognize you.
There is no one to speak in opposition or with a question.
All right, why don't we start with questions from the board? Jenny?
Could you, Mr. Riley, confirm the gross floor area? I thought you said around 5,000 square feet. Did I get?
The, well, the gross floor area, including the basement,
Yep.
is 6,005 square feet. The 5,000 square feet I was talking about
Was the two.
Is the first of floors.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I noticed that the house is just weeks away from be, becoming 75 years old.
Actually, yeah, I think that's wrong, but I know the property, the applicant's very concerned about it.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious to know how, is there any concern there about it possibly being historic, you know, and having to go in front of the commission?
The Christina Bassett, who was a staff person for the Historic Commission, was kind enough to send over what they call a Form B. And the, despite the look of the building, which when I looked at it, I thought it looked very old. The assessor's record, which is what the Historic Commission goes by, although we're going to have a conversation about that, is 1947, I believe, 48, whatever, 49.
49.
But the, the, the building permit that was issued to build the building is 1957. So the, and Dan Silva's still around. He's the son of the people who built the house. So we'll get some clarity on that, but I would say the applicant is concerned about it.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I don't have any questions right now.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So can we talk about the height of the house for a minute? I'm not very good at math either and I actually would have been a doctor if I was. I tried.
I trust, I trust Dave.
Yeah.
I trust Dave Clark.
But I thought you said that it's a foot lower than the max.
I think so. Let me just, let me just check. So the, all right, so in the lower left corner, we've got.
Yeah, I, I see, so basically it's.
70.3 is the max.
Right, and you have 69.6, right?
Okay, so we're half a foot below the max.
So not a foot. We're talking six inches. I just want to make sure, you know, size matters.
That's true. I've heard that before.
Yep. So I wanted to clarify that and I'll leave it at that.
I have no questions.
All right.
I'll move to close the hearing, move into deliberations.
Second.
All right, Jenny?
Okay.
On the motion.
Yes, I, I agree. Yes.
All right, Paul agrees.
Yes.
Yeah, Vich votes yes.
Okay. Why don't we, since Jenny was ready to start, why don't we start off with Jenny?
Okay, first of all, I do want to say that I appreciate the, the architect's attempt to make it look like, to break up the massing. Because the house is dead center at the end of Pine, or Pond Avenue, as we know. And that street, which is not, none of those are reflected on your numbers. These are all to the side of it and below, correct, that you provided, Mr. Riley?
Right.
Okay. So as we know, when we drive through there, and there's only one way to get in there, that there are 20 houses on that street and. that there are 20 houses on that street, and I would say not even a handful of them are more than one story. So there is definitely this transition right where this house is. And so I think that's really important for me to hear today, the, the attempt to break that up. I, I don't know that a five-foot recess really breaks it up, but I appreciate the attempt and the difference in the exterior application to try to break that up. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's a large house. The building coverage is over 100% increase to what's there now.
What's there now is extremely modest.
I, I understand, but you're not just going out, you're going up. And as Randy pointed out, six inches from the max.
I don't think it's fair to compare building coverage for a house like that with.
Mr. Riley, why don't you let her finish what she has to say instead of interrupting her?
Oh, I didn't realize.
Well, you know, one of our criterias is scale and mass, and I totally understand that the back of this neighborhood has very large homes. According to your sheet, there are only three homes, though, that are larger than this house that's proposed. So it's large, and it's, it's tall. It's, it's six inches, eight inches from the maximum allowed in Chatham. So I'm concerned about the height. But I, as I say, I do, you know, I appreciate that the owners want to get a view, and that's why they're trying to maximize the height. But it, it does appear as though it's, oh, here's the other thing I wanted to, to comment on with respect to massing, is that you're right, the building is going in the back, so you aren't going to see that. And from the water view, it's probably, I would imagine, very attractive. But it's almost 70 feet long, and it's 58 feet, according to what I calculated, and I could be off across. So I do worry about that lateral house being so tall and 58 feet approximately long, right at the end of Pond Avenue. So that's why I'm concerned about criteria five.
I think this is a great example of a project that would benefit from a 3D rendition, or something similar to what we had on Oyster Lane that put the, the structure in context with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know if that's possible now, but I agree, criteria number five is a concern for me as well. If they could bring the height down a little bit, that would be great. And I think along with the 3D design or some sort of rendering, plan for landscaping on the old front of the house, the Pond View Drive, to see what that's going to look like, that might help too. But otherwise, I mean, I think it's great. I love the concept of an upside-down house. Those are my thoughts.
All right. Dave, would you like to participate?
Well, thank you, I would. Yeah, I'm glad that Lee brought up the 3D point. This is a perfect example of, of a situation that would help us all better appreciate how it fits in with the neighborhood. As far as I'm concerned about the specific house, to me, it's maxed out, you know? We're going up to 2840, 10 square feet short of the max. The building height is going up half a foot short of the max. When you come down Pond View and you're, you're looking right into that house, I get bad memories of a certain house on Little Beach, and I don't want to compare that with this, but here it is. It's going to be right in your face. It's going to be in your face. And I just don't think for the neighborhood, because up to that point, you're talking about everything you've driven by, and also everything around there. I don't think that that's a great thing.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll just use the word gobsmacked. When you come down the street and you see this much larger house, much taller, that's the, that's the word that came to my mind. So I wouldn't support it at this mass and this height, but come back with something more present, you know, more acceptable to most of us.
Well, I'm, I guess my take on this is, comes from considering that it meets all of the dimensional requirements of the bylaw. And it's only, it's here, and the lot is, is sized for the zone. And it's here only because they lack frontage, seven feet, linear, linear feet of frontage. And that, to, that kind of, the way I interpret those things and have in the past is that I'm inclined to not, to, to, I know we have these considerations about the streetscape and et cetera, et cetera. But this is, has been constructed or designed to satisfy the requirements of the bylaw. And so I, I'm not inclined to, to step in and say that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I appreciate the different views, but I see it differently based on the, on the overall setting.
Yes, Randy?
I just want to just be a little bit more clear and say that I think that number two of the criteria and number five are reasons why I stated what I did. So there's two, two of them, not just five. The number two being compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. So when you come down Pond View, it's really out of whack with the other properties.
Well, Mr. Riley, you've heard several comments here indicating that a, a, a better depiction of the project would help, whether 3D or by way of photo shopping. Do you feel that you have a need for a straw vote before we go forward here? Or do you?
No, I can count. I'm, I'm good on the counting stuff, as long as it doesn't go above 10. But the, what I'd like to do is just put this on hold for a minute so I can talk to the client. You guys are ready for a 10-minute break anyway. And I can talk to Doug and I'll talk to the client, and then I'll come back with some suggestions.
All right. Yes, Randy?
So I just want to be at least on the record. I think a 3D is going to make me more adverse. I think a 3D is going to emphasize how big and tall it is for that spot. So I'm not going to sign on to saying that if I saw a 3D, maybe I'll change my mind. I highly doubt it.
Well, while everybody else was saying how much it would help, I was thinking about what you said the last time I came here with a 3D.
Right, I thought I made it worse. So that's my experience, just my personal opinion. And I know it's expensive.
Yeah, so anyway, if we could have like 10 minutes so I can talk to the client.
All right, well, we have, we have two more to go after this. So why don't we take a five-minute break and we'll come back?
Mine's the next one, I have the next one too, so.
After the break, we could always take it out of order.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll take a five-minute break.
All right, thanks.
No, I was laying on my office. I mean, I could be.
Welcome, welcome back to the meeting after our brief recess. We'll come back to Mr. Riley. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing that moment. We weren't able to reach the applicant, so we can't report on any decision, I guess. And I heard the conversation earlier about dates. So I guess we would ask for a continuous to the first available date, which I think would be the seventh with the possibility of going to the 14th.
How about January 11th, 2024?
How about the seventh going to the 14th?
We now have seven applications on December 7th and six on December 20.
We wouldn't actually go forward that day.
Well, if, but that's if we have a special meeting on the December 14th.
All right, I heard that conversation. Just trying to take advantage of sitting here, that's all.
So the first available regularly scheduled beating date is January 11th, 2024.
And how many, how many do you have for that time now?
You'll be the first on the agenda.
See, so.
Because I can't legally stamp in for that date yet.
So you get to go first.
I can make a motion if you want, that helps.
Well, the, the, I don't know. So Doug, I need your opinion here. So the first available date is?
January 11th, 2024.
So.
Well, I, I know that the owners are hoping to get a decision, you know, ideally in November or December.
Well, in reality, you know, if we didn't get it today, by the time the appeal period expires on a later date, you wouldn't make January 1st anyway. I mean, even if they could fit us in on the 7th.
I'll, I'll move to, uh, uh, accept, uh, the request to continue this matter until January eleventh.
Second.
All right, we'll vote on that.
Ginny? Ginny votes yes.
I vote yes.
Paul votes yes.
Randy votes yes.
Vito votes yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Up to you. The next one on the, on the agenda, I guess, would be Bill Riley. Do we, should I go ahead with Bill? Are you ready on that, Bill?
I'm always ready.
Dairy Family Trust, uh, twenty-three dash oh nine eight.
Application number twenty-three dash zero nine eight, the Dairy Family Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at, located at Twenty Captain's Walk, also shown on the town of Chatham, Assessor's Map fifteen H., Block thirty-five, Lot H. twenty-two. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of a partial second floor addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located twenty point four feet from the north of Leo Butter, where a twenty-five-foot setback is required.
Five minutes.
Proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered, is considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of Section Six of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The building coverage will remain one thousand eight hundred fifty-five square feet, or two thousand nine hundred square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen square feet, or forty thousand square feet is required in the R. forty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section Six, and Section Five B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Riley.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the Dairy Family. Uh, they want to make a very modest change to their home at Twenty Captain's Walk. If you've been to the site, you know that the, uh, they have a half cape, uh, facing the street with an L. behind it, uh, and what they want to do is they want to add a second floor over the L. Uh, they have the, which plan is it? The, uh, so the proposed addition meets the setbacks, uh, which are twenty-five feet, because it's in our forty zone. Uh, there's no, right, so you see the proposed second-story addition on the plan. It meets the setbacks, uh, you know, it's not visible from the street, uh, unless you drive onto the, unless you drive onto the lot. So, uh, the, uh, I think that this is a, something that can be approved that's not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I can talk as long as I, as long as you want. Oh, we can finish with that. I'm taking hand direction from the Emperor.
Thank you. Straightforward proposal. Um, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in favor of this application.
There is no one to speak in favor.
And in terms of correspondence, we have one memorandum from Judith Giorgio, Health Agent. I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property. The existing dwelling has three bedrooms. The proposal adds a fourth bedroom. The Board of Health, nitrogen loading regulation does not allow for the addition of a fourth bedroom on this twenty-three thousand square foot lot. The maximum allowed is three. Do you have a response to that?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have a response to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Judith Giorgio says that, uh, the maximum that you can have is, uh, three bedrooms on a twenty-three thousand square foot lot. This proposal adds a fourth bedroom, and a fourth bedroom would not be allowed.
The, uh, I'll leave that to Rick Roy and the people representing the Dairy Family with the, on the, on the special permit, on the billing permit side. The, but in terms of numbers, right now, the second floor is four hundred and sixty square feet. We're gonna change it, so the second floor is gonna be have eight hundred and ninety-five square feet. Other than that, footprint remains the same. No construction, no excavation of the property.
So you're anticipating that there's no, uh, change to the plans that we would be approving?
Well, worst-case scenario, they have to do a six-foot case opening on one of the rooms.
All right. Uh, there's no other correspondence. Let me ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in opposition to this application or who has a specific question. Please indicate, and we will recognize you.
There is no one, uh, with a question or to speak in opposition.
Okay. I'll ask, uh, the board members for questions, so why don't we start with Lee?
I don't really have any questions. I am, I'm concerned about approving plans, though, that have, show too many bedrooms, I guess.
Well, I think the, um, to give you comfort, I can tell you, they can't get a billing permit unless, unless the Board of Health signs off. And the only modification would be an interior wall change.
Jay, is that consistent with your understanding of what would happen?
Uh, we are now recently allowed to issue building permits without Board Health approval, but we can't issue occupancy permits without a final sign-off from Board of Health.
Okay. Uh, any other board members have questions?
I have one. I just, quick one. Um, maybe I'm just not reading this properly, but is it, is there an inconsistency between the ad and what this narrative is at the back? It says, "The structure, both existing and as proposed, comply with all dimensional requirements." But the front says, "The existing structure is non-conforming." I just wanted to reconcile that, those two things. Or maybe it's my misunderstanding.
All right, I'm sorry.
The ad, you know, the front application, the advertisement, says that it is, um, says that the, uh, dwelling is non-conforming on a non-conforming lot. The, the narrative at the back, it's only like two sentences, says, "The structure, both existing and proposed, comply with all dimensional," but that's not accurate, correct? The ad is correct?
Oh, you're right. It's my fault.
Okay. No, I just wanted to confirm which was.
Although the, although the sideline setback.
Is twenty, yeah.
Rehabilitation's twenty feet instead of twenty-five.
Yep. Okay. That's what I thought. I just, just wanted to clarify.
All right. If there are no further questions, is there a motion?
Uh, I'll move to close the hearing and move in deliberations.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a vote on that, Ginny?
Uh, Ginny votes yes.
Me votes yes.
Paul votes yes?
Yes.
Vito votes yes.
Okay. Why don't we move on to Randy?
So I think it meets all the criteria, um, and I, I think that it's a good pickup about the bedroom scenario, but they can't start to live there until the bedroom is taken care of, so I think we're all okay. You know, I don't think we're being derelict in our duties if we say all right.
Pretty good.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm looking at the, at the plan, um, they'll have to make a choice of, of a room to, oh, have a six-foot case opening. It won't change, I shouldn't change any of the exterior appearance or anything that we're approving here, so I think we can support it. It's certainly not substantially more detrimental and meets our criteria.
Actually, I think, I don't think you guys actually approve the floor plan of the building. What you're really doing is approving the exterior of the building. Floor plan stuff is really, you know, for the Board of Health and the Building Department. But that's just a thought.
All right, Ginny?
Um, I love this house. I, I know exactly where it is. I don't live too far from it. I think Rick Roy does excellent work. These additions are gonna be a great, um, I mean, the house doesn't even need improving, but these are gonna be, make it even better. Um, certainly not substantially more detrimental. I would support it.
I agree with my colleagues. It is a beautiful home, and I think these additions, this addition is gonna be really nice, so I would approve it.
And I also agree. Uh, do we have a motion? And I don't think there's a need for conditions as such, but.
I, I, no, I would move approval, um, as submitted, and I, but I think we, um, I think we probably would want our standard about, um, vehicles and activity confined to the site or with neighboring approval. Um, and, you know, these days, I'm inclined to take that piece about, um, eight to five, um, and no weekends during, uh, the summer months, uh, if we can apply it, if we feel. But I'm not attached to that part. It's the first one I want to make sure, you know, following, so.
All right. Uh, is there any other board member that thinks we should add the other conditions on there? I guess not.
No.
So I take it that the motion then would be to approve the application as submitted with the provision that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or to neighboring property with the permission of the property owner?
And that's my motion, yes.
And I'll second that.
Ginny?
Ginny says, votes yes. Lee votes yes.
Yes.
Vito votes yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And now, we can move on to. Application twenty-three dash one hundred. Paul Matisse, or Mattis, at, um, One Horizon Drive.
Application number twenty-three dash one hundred, Paul Matisse and Kate, Katie Dean, care of Kevin Monas, P.O. Box fifteen oh one, Easton, Mass. zero two three three four. Owners of property located at One Horizon Drive, also shown on the town of Chatham, Assessor's Map five I., Block four, Lot C. four. The applicant seeks to enlarge standard change a conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of a partial second floor addition and conversion of the garage to habitable space. The dwelling and garage comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section Six of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is two thousand three hundred ninety-two square feet, seven point two six percent, and the proposed building coverage is two thousand four hundred eleven square feet, seven point three one percent, where ten percent is the maximum allowed. The law is non-conforming, and it contains thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four square feet, or sixty thousand square feet is required in the R. sixty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section Six, and Section Five B of the protective bylaw.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, first of all, thank you for your time today. Uh, my name is Kevin Monas from Monas Architects. I'm here representing Paul and Kate Matisse. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the project, and then if there's any, I'll open it up to questions. Um, the, the main purpose of the project is to add, um, reconfigure interior space, update finishes. Uh, the home was built in the year two thousand. There was an addition off to the back of the property that was in two thousand and four. Um, part of this renovation, the client has, has tasked me with finding, um, areas that would be more practical, taking some underutilized areas of the property and making them more beneficial to their family. Um, one of the areas that we're, we're looking at here, so this is the first floor plan of the main home, um, primarily interior renovations here. If we flip to the second story, uh, A. one, yep. Um, what we're doing on the, on the rear, on the left side there is your existing, the right side is proposed. The one-story addition is that rectangle on the back of the property that was in two thousand and four. Uh, one-story, it's a family room with a flat roof and a deck up above it. That deck is, is accessible from the side of the property, away from the, the patio and the deck and the pool, and just frankly doesn't get much use. One of the ideas in reconfiguring the second floor was to add, uh, add a bedroom, which you'll hear comment from, um, Board of Health, and to give them more of a proper primary suite with a suitable bathroom and closet, um, for their use. And also, we're also taking away an office from the first floor and adding a more dedicated office space on the second floor, um, since with remote work, um, i- is a need for the client. So that's, that's the only portion of this project that we're technically adding gross floor area, per the definition of, of floor area. Um, but if you flip down one, we're also converting a detached two-car garage, um, and we're adding additional square footage there. They don't use the two-car garage. Um, with the open concept of the first floor on the main home, the homeowners were looking to have a, a separate space, uh, for entertaining, that would be more of a, a media space, a game room, pool table, ping pong, stuff like that, um, which is also adjacent to their yard, on the side yard, close to the pool and the patio. Um, and so that was, that's why you'll see on the cover page of my, uh, set of drawings here, there's a gross floor area calculation, but because that includes the garage, it doesn't really tell the whole story. So, uh, living square footage calculations are there, um, in case there's any questions there. The, the addition, so the, the, let me first talk about the garage. So the garage, there's no change to the footprint, there's no change to the exterior envelope of the building, other than removing the garage doors and adding, uh, windows to make it more of like a carriage house look. On the main house, the addition to the second floor complies with all bulk and regulatory, uh, dimensional constraints in the zoning code. Um, and like I said, that's the only area of the, of the project where we're adding additional gross square footage. I'm happy to go through the, the criteria one by one, if necessary, but I'll leave, open it up for questions.
Well, I don't think that's going to be necessary, but I'll just check with any other board members. Do any of you feel it's necessary to go through the individual criteria? Okay, fine. Um, thank you for that presentation. I'll ask if there's anyone, uh, in the audience or on Microsoft Teams that would like to comment favorably, uh, in favor of this application.
There is no one to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have a memorandum from Judith Giorgio, the Health Agent, Board of Health, uh, dated October thirty-first. I have reviewed the plan to add habitable space to the garage and add to the second floor of the main house of this property. The property was approved for three bedrooms when the Title V septic system was installed in two thousand. The proposed plan calls for removing one bedroom in the main house to allow the proposed space in the garage gas, guest house. The septic system must be upgraded to an innovative alternate system, uh, to accommodate the renovations and approve the property for four bedrooms. The lot has thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four square feet and will accommodate a fourth bedroom in accordance with the Board of Health. So, that's, that's the only portion of this project that we're technically adding gross floor area per the definition of, of floor area. But if you flip down one, we're also converting a detached two-car garage, and we're adding additional square footage there. They don't use the two-car garage. With the open concept of the first floor on the main home, the homeowners were looking to have a, a separate space for entertaining that would be more of a, a media space, a game room, pool table, ping pong, stuff like that, which is also adjacent to their yard, on the side yard, close to the pool and the patio. And so, that was, that's why you'll see on the cover page of my set of drawings here, there's a gross floor area calculation, but because that includes the garage, it doesn't really tell the whole story. So, living square footage calculations are there in case there's any questions there. The, the addition, so the, the, let me first talk about the garage. So, the garage, there's no change to the footprint, there's no change to the exterior envelope of the building, other than removing the garage doors and adding, uh, windows to make it more of like a carriage house look. On the main house, the addition to the second floor complies with all bulk and regulatory dimensional constraints in the zoning code. And like I said, that's the only area of the, of the project where we're adding additional gross square footage. I'm happy to go through the, the criteria one by one if necessary, but I'll leave, open it up for questions.
Well, I don't think that's going to be necessary, but I'll just check with any other board members. Do any of you feel it's necessary to go through the individual criteria? Okay, fine. Thank you for that presentation. I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Microsoft Teams that would like to comment favorably in favor of this application.
There is no one to speak in favor.
All right, I'll read the correspondence. We have a memorandum from Judith Giorgio, the Health Agent, Board of Health, dated October 31st. I have reviewed the plan to add habitable space to the garage and add to the second floor of the main house of this property. The property was approved for three bedrooms when the Title V Septic system was installed in 2000. The proposed plan calls for removing one bedroom in the main house to allow the proposed space in the garage gas, guest house. The septic system must be upgraded to an innovative alternate system to accommodate the renovations and approve the property for four bedrooms. The lot has 32,944 square feet and will accommodate a fourth bedroom in accordance with the Board of Health nitrogen loading regulations. Board of Health will be reviewing the proposed septic application at its November 6th beating. I'll ask if there is anyone on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak against this proposal or has a specific question. If so, please indicate your desire to speak.
There is no one in opposition or with a question.
Okay. We'll go to questions from the board. Randy?
I have no questions.
No questions, Dave.
No questions.
No questions.
I have no questions, and Dave? No questions. All right.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
Want to take a vote on that?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
All votes yes?
Yes.
Each votes yes.
Okay. We hear a motion to approve. Let's go to deliberations. Before we do that, why don't we start with Dave Veach?
Yeah, thanks. Well, this, I think this meets all of our criteria. It's, it's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood at all. It's a, a nice improvement, I think, for the family and, and for the property. It meets all of the applicable criteria, and I will support it.
Okay. Ginny?
I echo Dave Veach. I think it's, looks like a great project, and he did a nice presentation and meets all of our criteria, and I would support it.
I agree with my colleagues.
As do I.
All right. Do I hear it? And I agree as well. I think it's unanimous vote. Let's, uh, excuse me, let's take a motion?
Move to approve the application with the only condition that all vehicles remain on property during construction or in a neighbor.
All construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner?
That's what I meant.
Okay.
Dave Veach seconds.
All right. I'll take a vote. Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
Votes yes.
Yes.
Each votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Yes.
Move to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds.
All right, we'll take a vote on that. Ginny?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee votes yes.
All votes yes?
Yes.
David votes yes.
Each votes yes.
And David votes yes. That's the unanimous vote. The time is.
6:50 PM.
6:50 PM.